Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 31st, 2015 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Tonight, we'll get right into our meeting. And any announcements today?
Yes, I have one. We received another favorable communication regarding Department of Public Works from a resident. I'll just read some excerpts. "We are writing to express our gratitude to the town of Hatfield and especially Mr. Tony Lestowski, the Hatfield Water Superintendent. On Sunday, Mr. Lestowski came to our home and after considerable work digging through the snow, found the shut-off valve near the road, made plans to return for assistance. The problem resisted a number of different approaches, but he never gave up, never lost his polite and supportive attitude. His efforts and suggestions helped us get through what would have been a very difficult situation for anyone, but especially people of our age. This morning, he and his assistants solved our problem. Many years ago, I was a board of selectmen in Chootsberry where I learned how much the quality of local government depends upon the skill and commitment goodwill of its employees. In Chootsberry and all the time since then, I don't believe that I have met any government employee who has done his or her job with more skill, more genuine concern for the welfare of the people being helped, or more commitment to getting the job done and the problem solved. We thank Mr. Lestowski and all those assistants he brought to solving our problem, and we thank also the town of Hatfield for making this such a wonderful place to live." Very nice letter.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
You have a Center School flyer. Pardon me? You have the Center School flyer to announce, to remind folks of the Center School program on the Fourth of April?
Oh, yeah. It's Saturday. Yeah, April 4th, the Center School ceremony has been modified. Originally, there's going to be a tour of the building, but the building inspector did not think that that was a very good idea, considering the condition of the building. But there will be a ceremony outside the building, and people are asked to come and share their anecdotes. That'll be April 4th.
This Saturday.
This Saturday. Okay, public forum. Anyone here for public forum? If not, move on.
Move to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 10:00, March 2015.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, hold on, I've got one thing here. Under generators, okay, second page, where it says generators?
Yes.
Oh, key's not here. It shouldn't say generators there. It should be school freezers. Has nothing to do with generators, that one. Okay. So, motion to approve with one correction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we will break for executive session under eight.
Move the Board of Selectmen convene in executive session under messages, general law, Chapter 38, Section 21, to consider applicants for employment. And the chair so declares that a meeting would have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified candidates shall not apply to them.
Motion made.
Is there second?
Lesko, aye.
Moriarty, aye.
Royal, aye.
And we will be returning. Okay, we'll have the DPW Director's report.
Just to keep it short, the water transmission main bit is going to be a week delay. Brockley and Smith, that would like all, uncovering this past week. And the easement is going to change from the driveway easement until it's going right by the railroad tracks where there's an existing easement already in place. So, that's the update on that.
Okay, anything else? That's it. Okay, thank you. All right, posted business, budget, Paul?
Okay.
Anything new on the budget?
Yeah, I mean, we'll be getting into this later with the finance committee.
At least give an update of what's going on here.
Yeah, as of the budget, the way I see it, as of 1:30 this afternoon, we are a little over $100,000 in the red. And a big chunk of that is because I updated the snow and ice deficit figures today. And so, the snow and ice deficit, as it stands now, is $137,500, which is like double what it was last year. So, that's the bad news. The good news is that I've got some numbers from the accountant in the HCOG. Mike, the accountant's been working with Roland at HCOG. I've got a handout for everybody up there. But it looks like free cash is probably going to come in somewhere around $250,000. So, without getting into a lot of gory detail, that's about where we stand.
I think it's important, too, that the people realize that the $137,000 snow deficit is above and beyond what was allocated in the DPW budget for snow and ice. So, that's just so everybody's aware of that, that's all.
That comes strictly through taxation.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Paul, on that?
No, no.
Warren articles?
Yeah, well, we kind of need to close on the Warren articles. There's only a couple of lingering questions. And actually, the first one is in regards to the Lions Club Pavilion.
Oh.
So, why don't we get into that?
Okay. Take that one at the same time. What number is that, Paul?
Article 10.
Just says in mind, see if the town will vote Lions Club Pavilion.
Yeah, that's all it says. I don't know where...
Give us a little update on this.
Phil, I have nothing to do with this.
I'm sure that they are here for that purpose.
Correct.
Okay, let's talk, we'll go into discussion.
Let me see if I can recall. Talking about transfer a certain property to the Lions Club Pavilion, transferring ownership to the Lions Club. And at the end of the first act, as I recall, there was to be a survey after the snow cleared...
That's correct.
...as to what would be proposed to transfer. Players there would be the school, we don't know exactly what part of that property is school versus town, town and the Lions Club. And that was the next step to define, in fact, what it is, what is potentially to be transferred and conduct that survey.
I believe we had the plot plan that you had done last year.
We had the plot plan, but it wasn't the survey. It's just the plot plan.
No, but it was a plot plan showing where we wanted it. So, where are we at with the survey at this point in time?
We're not.
We're not. It's open for discussion.
We're just looking, you guys don't have any other plans to give you?
I didn't.
I mean, just to take, this is the original one, done in '89.
Yeah.
And we're basically just looking to get this back. Let's go look at it that way, because that's the mill river. So, if you, the school, this bound is here. This bound is right on the edge of the blacktop. So, the old, the way it went way back was the Lions Club used to own, this was about four acres, four point-whatever acres, and we kept a little over an acre of it. So, this was three acres we were given to the, for the elementary school, and we basically get three acres back. This is the end of the fence, and this is your ball field where the, remember the cable guide rails that used to be there?
Yeah, where is the blacktop in here, Bill?
Blacktop's probably, probably in the fold, I want to say. This is basically what you always see, like when we had the bonfire, this is where we fenced everything off and you had the sandycans.
That's almost into the ball field, all right?
No, it's the edge.
The edge of the ball?
It's where, it's where the cable guide rails used to be, where it used to delineate the pavilion, the parking area, and the ball field to keep people from driving on the ball field.
Okay, so this is beyond that blacktop area, then?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, quite a bit. So, it takes in all the, all the parking on the grass area and stuff like that when you have the bonfire? Okay, so that's in there.
If I'm not mistaken, Bill...
When you guys were here last time, this is kind of to clean up what was already agreed upon back 30 years ago, 25 years ago, if I'm not, right? In 1989, 1988, town meeting approved this, and between the actual physical transfer from the town to the Lions Club, it just really never happened properly, as far as being deeded appropriately. Is that, I mean, that's what this is in a nutshell, just as a recap for, for the people watching on TV. So, this is really nothing, to the best of my recollection, this is nothing new. This is really just to clean things up and make it all the way it's supposed to be.
Okay, to make this happen, that survey needs to be done immediately, okay? Otherwise, it's not going to happen on town meeting floor.
It's been there.
It's been there.
It's a done survey.
I thought when you put out the...
And we found the markers, correct?
Yeah, the bounds are there. It's a done survey.
I thought you did...
You mean this one here?
Yeah, done in '89. Because they originally did it when they took too much.
Check on this, it didn't match up, is what they...
And then we're like, no, we don't want that much. That's when they went back, and it's just to the edge of the fields.
Okay, I thought we had to have it surveyed again.
Well, all that's there.
Well, and originally, you guys came, it was winter, so we, everything was buried and nobody could find the pins at the time.
And now we can't. The bounds are there.
Okay, so, if during town meeting, that was transferred, refresh my memory, back when it was voted on?
Yeah.
Okay, it was voted as far as this plan?
Well, that was before, when they voted on town meeting, they voted to give us the land back. And then they voted, they did money for the survey, and then the survey was done wrong, according to the notes I had, passed down to me. And then they resurveyed it in '89.
Which is what was then looking for the next town meeting vote to approve that survey, correct? I mean, that's, I mean, that's the impression we're under, I think.
Yeah, I mean...
There ended up being two surveys.
Yeah, because the first one was incorrect. Yeah, they were taking too much land.
Right. Because they, yeah, they took, they took the ball field and too much in it, so it had to be resurveyed, so now...
We packed it up. It was basically three acres for three acres.
At this town meeting, we're going to have to have information as far as documentation, as far as boundary lines, where the boundaries are here, so that way you can, when we put it into the article, it'll say exactly what's going to be...
Yeah, I need, for the Warren article, I will need a description.
We can make a copy of any, the description that you've got. Must have a deed...
Bingo.
Deed description.
I got the old deed, which is on, you can just pull that off the Hampshire County Records, but that shows when you had...
Yeah, but that shows the original deed. We're not looking...
This was never deeded because it never passed through.
Right, right. Hence, our predicament now.
I mean, everything's there, what's proposed, convey town, back to the Lions Club, all your points. It was just never deeded back to us.
All right, so, in order for this to happen, like I said again, this is going to have to go to the attorney, get him on it right away, and get a deed description, get the property, the points, so we know exactly what we're talking about here.
Yeah, so with town meeting, we can simply say this is just to clean up the records more, more than anything. That's all that's really happening.
Well, the thing was, when it was voted the last time, it was more into the ball field, instead of back out.
Correct.
And we want to make sure that it's the correct survey, and that there's still some of the green and the grass as well, instead of just to the asphalt.
All right, so can you get ahold of Copman and Page, or whoever we're using now? And get them on that, get a deed description ASAP for town meeting, and also have them write up the article?
And if you have any questions, maybe you can...
Okay, well, hopefully, this is enough information here.
Well, I just have one question, Bill. Big plan that you have there shows three parcels, is that correct?
Yeah.
And what does that show? One parcel, I mean, one parcel split?
That's the same, no.
No, there's, there's three separate parcels here.
Yeah, because this plot is different pieces. So, now we're going to, you're going to say one piece?
So, you're going to take all three parcels? Is that what the proposal is?
Bill, can you come up here for another second here? I just want to be clear here. Okay, we're taking from this point to this point?
Mm-hmm. Because where that metal pin is, goes in on that metal parcel?
You're talking this one here?
Yeah, that's in the blacktop. That's how it goes to the edge of the blacktop.
No, this is your edge of blacktop here. This is, this is the end of the fence which runs east-west, and your ball field's here. There's a concrete bound here, and there's a concrete, this concrete bound is in the blacktop.
Right, well, right. But I'm saying that this parcel here, that's broke like this, this piece is in the, almost in the, this line is almost in the parking lot, in the Lions Club parking lot, where the pavilion is. Because the pavilion is partially in this parcel.
Yeah, it just catches a corner.
Where's the roadway here?
It's right along this.
That's the building's way, right?
Yep.
So, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that the blacktop for the parking lot, where the pavilion is, is right in here.
Yeah.
Right in here. So, this is grass, is what I'm saying.
Okay, but I guess for our sake, the minute we put this pin here, or this is what we're accepting at town meeting, okay, this, this parcel, this is what we're accepting right here. Okay, run along to the brook, up over this way here, like that. If we're accepting all of this, that means that road cuts off right at that property line, and that's where we end plowing or anything like that. That's for the school.
Yeah, we don't...
And then every, the Lions Club maintains everything after...
It's mounted there now.
Yeah, right. Everything after that.
We don't use it now, anyway, too. I mean, that's a, you know, summer, spring facility.
Okay, the only thing...
But the only concern that I have is if, if you do do something back there, is what happens if there's a fire back there? How are they going to get the smell in the way?
Not really worried about a metal building burning.
But that's, that's not our...
I just want to make sure, you know? I didn't know if you were going to have a wood structure or anything.
No, but, I mean...
But that's up to them and the insurance company, that's not up to us. Yeah, so, I just want to be clear on what we're, you have any questions, Jeff, on that?
I do, but go ahead.
All right. Go ahead, now's the time to talk about it.
No, I thought, I thought when you put the pins down, it came out not consistent with...
That isn't consistent with the original, where they had to go back to town meeting. The original plan that wasn't right is not consistent with that plan.
They shouldn't be. Right, because they had to fix it. Because they were saying it was too much, right?
That, that one should show way over here, right?
Yeah.
Closer to the school.
Closer to the school. What we're doing is pulling it back away from the school to the edge of the ball field.
Yeah, it was back there somewhere. And it wasn't intentional, Lions Club to get that much, and that's when they resurveyed it.
So, what minutes are available at town meeting when that was, when it didn't go through? Why didn't it pass, the transfer?
Yes, Lydia.
Well, I will have the records from '80, what?
'89.
'89?
Yeah.
There'll be a record of the town vote. I'll have that. But as far as anything that happened with the board of selectmen meeting, that would probably be in the minutes, after we search the minutes. So, the other point I was going to bring up is, this plan the bill has is not signed by the planning board. So, first, I think you're going to have to figure out if the planning board has signed this plan. Or if not, you may have to find the original Mylar and, or get a copy of that.
Why would it be signed by the planning board? Who, just a land transfer?
Subdivision approval not required. Your...
Back in '89?
Doing it now, then.
Back in '89?
Did you have subdivision? It, I mean, it's right, the surveyor put it on here, so I'm assuming it's applicable. And the surveyor did the plan.
If it was voted at town meeting, okay, to convey that piece, parcel over to the Lions Club?
Right.
Okay, it was conveyed, but it was conveyed with the wrong dimension.
Or it was, it was proposed to be conveyed with the wrong dimensions. It wasn't actually conveyed, and you can't...
It wasn't conveyed, but did town meeting vote that, with what they had for a plan at that time?
I don't know, I have no, I haven't looked at the...
I think you had that town meeting vote, Bill, didn't you?
I haven't looked at it.
I just had some notes on how everything went.
Pardon?
I just had notes on how everything went that was handed down to me, which was just chronological, when we went to town.
Okay, because it would have to go to town meeting, it had been voted at town meeting in order for it to be approved, okay? If town meeting approved it, then it goes whatever the town meeting approved, okay? And then, the way I'm understanding it is, it was too much of the parcel, it cut back into half the ball field. So, now we have to go back to town meeting and move that line over to here, okay? So, I think what we need to find out, we need to get that, the last town meeting vote when that was done. Paul?
Yep.
Lydia, you can help out on that.
I can, I can.
Okay, so we can cross-reference, because what you'll do is, what the attorney will do is cross-reference that vote and that deed and those property lines to the new one.
Right, but before he drafts the deed, this plan has to be done. You can't convey a portion of a larger piece without a plan. So, the plan, the original Mylar and plans have to be signed by the planning board and recorded in order to do the transfer.
I'm not so sure if it should be, if it has to be done by the planning board. That's a question for the attorney.
Yeah, Paul's got a, you have to our attorney anyways, and that can be...
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I did real estate for 38 years, so I'm telling you.
You probably don't want...
You, yeah, you're going to have to have that plan in there.
So, when the plan was brought, was redone in '89, was it brought to town meeting?
I shouldn't tell you.
Well, that's what Paul, you're going to research.
Well, that's why we're doing this. We assume it wasn't.
So, that plan wasn't approved at town meeting, as well?
Not this one. This is the one where it's moved that, whatever footage.
Yeah, the wrong, if there was a plan, the wrong plan was approved.
So, you have to start at square one here.
Okay. All right, we've got some work to do in order to get this on town meeting.
We're running out of time, quite frankly. I don't know if this is...
I know, but it's...
I don't know if this is all doable by May 12th.
Yeah.
Well...
Sure it is.
We'll see.
You, give Copman and Page a call tomorrow. Give them a call tomorrow and put them on it.
Yeah.
And let them go from there.
But we haven't, we haven't transferred our legal representation yet.
What's that?
We haven't transferred.
Oh. So, we should, we should be talking about that, too. All right, so you're going to take care of that, Paul?
Yep.
Oh, and we need to keep these guys in the loop.
Yeah. You'll be, you'll be, you got both their numbers, anyway, right?
I got Bill, Bill's number.
That's fine, and I can make sure.
As long as you got one.
It's been 26 years, what's another few weeks?
Okay, Center, we're going to move right out to Center.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
And move out to Center School?
Okay, you want, you do want to finish up with the articles?
Sure.
The other big question I have, well, there's two, two other placeholders in here that we have discussed but not really closed on. Do we want to make any changes to the treasurer and the collector's positions? Do we want to take any action on that? Do we want to combine them? Do we want to make, or keep them separated? Do we want to make them appointed? Try that again? What, what does, what is the board's pleasure?
Propose that we combine them and make them appointed.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Combine and make appointed.
This is a two-year, this is a two-year deal, now?
Non-policy positions helps ensure we get a better range of qualified candidates. Achieves a better integration of the two functions. Most communities of the state have merged the two. Paul Hannon gave you a handout last time from Department of Revenue. And their report on the financial management of town of Hatfield in 2011, DOR recommended, we do it, we combine them, so. I think it's most important to combine them. Second, I think secondly, it's important also to...
It's a process, because you're, you're removing something from an elected position to a, excuse me, appointed position.
Yes.
It needs to be voted at town meeting, and then it needs to go on the ballot. It's for the following year, I believe it is.
Yes, it'll, it wouldn't take effect for another year.
Right.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't have any effect on this...
On this election, right.
It wouldn't, it would go into effect after the, after the term, now, I guess...
Term finishes?
After the last term finishes, yeah. You know, I don't, so let's say, yeah, so there's, yeah, but we're, let's say the...
The lawyers could...
Beginning of a three-year term.
We know it won't go into effect immediately.
It would not go into effect for another three years.
I think the important thing is, too, that people should realize whether they, would be for or against this, this type of combination, is that this is, in fact, the State Department of Revenue is making this recommendation, especially to smaller cities and towns. So, it's not, not just three of us that are coming up with this idea, or two of us, or one of us, or however it plays out, but it's actually a recommendation from the Department of Revenue.
Right. All right, which one, what article was that?
That was 13.
13.
Lucky 13.
Okay, let's skip back, Article 7, there's an attachment A. There should be an attachment that we have.
But what are we doing?
Article 7, for the planning board...
What about Article 13?
On 13? I thought we were going to move forward with it.
You need closure on that, too.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just going to move forward with it.
Oh, okay.
And put it on there.
All right, I was waiting to hear some confirmation.
Is that what we...
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I mean, that's on, that's on the recommendation of the state and...
Combine and appoint, all right.
It's going to be up to the people whether they want it or not.
The other question is Article 14, on the enterprise funds we've been talking about. Do we want to combine water and sewer? But there's no closure on that either.
Well, again, I'll make the recommendation we do that. Got an aging system, an incomplete sewer system. Combining in water and sewer enterprise provides us all the same data that we, we have on our systems. It recognizes the reality that our capital investments, both in maintenance and in improvements and expansion of our system, is going to be dependent on taxation, not on revenues or retained earnings, if we were to keep them in any reasonable level of cost. And having one set of retained earnings would provide us a degree of flexibility that we don't have today. And, for example, we talked about this before, we could have avoided the special town meeting over $35,000 if it had all filtered into one, one set of retained earnings that could be used either for sewer or, or water. It's, I think it's a, it recognizes our fiscal situation and provides a degree of flexibility.
And I, you know, just to, to jump on that, I, I think it also, for, for the people's perspective, the enterprise fund, there's two of them that currently exist, one for sewer, one for water.
That's correct.
This is just a matter of, since they go hand in hand of making it one fund, but still within that fund, separate accountability for both sewer and for water. So, you know, again, I think it's important that people understand that that's...
Because those questions are going to come up.
Still delineation, oh, yeah. And rightfully so. So, if we can maybe address some of those now and...
Because they're gonna say, you know, why is my, my water being used by sewer when I'm not on the sewer? You know, that's, that's gonna be, sure that. All right, so, you made that motion, Jeff?
Yes.
The motion, was there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, put that on the warrant.
Okay.
And we need to vote on thirteen also. But thirteen, let's back up a little bit on thirteen. Jeff, you made the motion, I'm sorry, I, I took it out of order here. That was to combine the treasurer, collector's position?
And make it appointed.
And make it appointed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Not, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, put it on the, put it on the warrant. Okay. I just want to go back to Article seven, the attachment A. I don't see anything-
Yeah, it's, I, I don't have it on here at the moment, but it's, you know, several pages of a zoning amendment, and I'll have it for you for the next meeting.
We need to see attachment A and, and any attachments that we have here, so we can, we know what we're dealing with when we're at town meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so if you could get those to us ASAP.
Article twenty, do we have, is-
Where are we?
Article twenty.
Twenty.
Is CPA insistent that we break out the funding to that specificity?
I don't know if they're insistent, but that, this is the way they submitted it. Bob just, Bob sends the articles to me, I put them in the warrant.
I know, they probably got that off the, the estimates, but-
I, I'm sure, I'm sure they did.
Seems it might, might have a little leftover in one to put in another.
Let me talk, let me talk to him about that.
Right. You gotta look at that, Paul. I want to skip back to Article twelve.
One's a little higher, one's a little lower.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the bottom line doesn't change.
Right.
I want to go back to Article twelve. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate hundred and twenty-three thousand for the purpose of five-year lease program. I thought we put that in Phil's budget.
It is in Phil's budget.
It is in Phil's budget.
But why should we be voting it as an article? Because that's gonna give you a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars more.
This is, this is the end of the five-year lease, right?
But he put it in his budget. That's in his budget. That's, this is not in his budget, this is an article.
But this is a contract, right?
The reason why, the reason why it is an article is because it's a lease, and it has to be voted on at town meeting.
Yeah. It's a lease contract, just like we do the copier.
We just make it clear that-
But, the hundred and twenty-three voted here is part of Phil's budget.
Right.
Yeah, it will go into his budget.
But that's not what this is saying. This is saying we're giving a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars on top of his budget. That's what this is saying.
No, no.
That's the way I'm looking at it.
Yeah. Well, when you look at the budget sheets and where the money is being appropriated, you'll see that it's not there.
All right.
Oh, yeah, you don't want people to think it's an additional hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, it's additional on top of the budget, right. Okay, so we're at, what, twenty, twenty-one? That's all right.
That was it.
Twenty-two.
Oh, I thought we were on twenty-three?
What's, what's twenty-two? Twenty-two is provision for water and sewer.
That's a boilerplate.
That's boilerplate, yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-three?
It's a petition.
I thought we talked about putting a debt exclusion tied to this.
Well, we did talk about it. I'm not sure if there was-
But we're gonna have, we're gonna have the committee come in, or the John and Fran come in, along with the counsel and agent come in next Tuesday. We're supposed to be talking about this.
Okay, but right now, well, we're running out of ramp space here.
I know, I know, but that's what we said at last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, you're, yeah, that's right.
So, did you contact them and let them know?
Yeah, I will.
Don't wait too long, because, you know, they won't be [BLEEP].
But I mean, that's not something we're gonna discuss with them, whether we're gonna put a debt exclusion. There's no other way to pay for it, so it's gonna be on debt exclusion.
But that's, that's what we said, it's gotta come in through, that's not up to us to do that, because that was by petition. The, in order for it to come up, it's gotta be amended. The petition stands the way it is. You can't change the petition. So, the only thing that can change the petition, you can change it on town hall floor.
And I believe the conversation was to let them know, basically giving them a heads up as to where we stood financially as a town.
But, don't, we'd have to put it on the ballot, so we need to-
It'll have to go on the ballot as well.
So we need a call as to whether we're gonna-
So it would be, it'd be a combination of the three. It would be free cash, lease, or borrow. Or, or, I'm sorry, debt exclusion.
It would be debt exclusion.
Debt exclusion, override.
Override would cover the operating expenses.
Right, okay.
So, the discussion we've had is, do we put, do we just leave it as it is?
Right. And then on town hall floor?
We don't have the money to do it. Or do we put in articles for a debt exclusion and an override? A debt exclusion for the capital acquisition and the override for the operating expenses.
And I, I believe that's what we talked about with the finance committee last week, that we were gonna bring to John and Fran and say, you know, here's the deal.
Okay, so you-
What do you want to do?
So you want to add Article twenty-four would be a-
It'd be a contingent on that one, if it passed.
Either a debt exclusion override or-
No, no, it'd be debt exclusion for the capital acquisition and override for-
Operating expenses.
The fee, for the operating expense and to get an appraisal, those kinds of things.
All right, so that, that should be another article.
Okay.
In there. That way it'll cover us.
Yeah, because if it ever got passed, it's gotta get paid for it.
Yeah. And then we just table Article twenty-four if it-
Yeah, we table both of those if it gets the fee.
It'll give us a tool to, to move it forward. Okay, and then- Article twenty-two is the budget one.
You got the ton there over here.
Okay. Okay, so you got some more work to do there, Paul?
Yep.
All right. And-
Okay, can we get a schedule that we all agree to, that we're closing on this warrant? It needs to be about the middle of this month.
Right.
Middle of, excuse me, middle of April tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have to have legal review.
Yep.
Because finance committee, what I would like to do is take up one last thing before we leave here. I said, April first, we'll be looking at town hall closure on Fridays. I'd like to bring that for discussion today, because I'm, I'm just, I'm seeing our work is not getting done in some areas, and that, we need to bring that up again and vote on it. So, it's just, you know, matter of fact, I, I'll make a motion that we go back to the five-day work week. Because I'm, I'm seeing, like I said, I'm seeing the work's not getting done, and we need an extra day in here and, and open the town meeting up for five days. That's my motion.
I'll second for discussion. I know Brian has some views and-
Brian, motion for, made and seconded. Open for discussion.
Well, I, I just, I just think, you know, today's world, there's many places, cities and towns that, and workplaces that do the four-day work week. I can't speak to whether work is or isn't getting done. That's, that's not a matter of the town hall hour, that's a matter of the people that are, might be questioned. I will say, just to be clear, and from the very beginning, my thought was, there were no town offices open here, except the DPW.
The COA.
COA doesn't matter, people don't come to visit them to pay a bill. No. So, there, so whether we're open eight days a week, or two days a week, it still boils down to what are the hours kept by the various collector, treasurer, accountant, et cetera. So, if we want to be open five days a week, that's fine, but people need to realize that doesn't mean all these departments who never were open on Fridays, prior to this four-day work week, are all of a sudden gonna be open five days a week.
Right, that's up to them to open it.
We just need to make it clear.
Yeah.
For me, the whole thing was, if nobody was here on Fridays, then extend the hours for the working people who could come here before they went to work, or could come here after they went to work. So, that's, that's all I want to say about it.
Just for a little more discussion, I know this winter with so many days off and so on, Mondays off and Tuesdays off, whatever the case may be, we lost a lot of, a lot of work in here. So we could've worked on Fridays, it didn't happen. So, we did have a lot of free time, and, and so that's, that's another reason why I think this should go to five days. So I'll put it to a vote.
You know, in, in that aspect, Ed, it is fair, except it just happened to always have a snowstorm on a Sunday into a Monday.
It just happened, I know that.
I mean, you know, the snowstorm could've been every Wednesday, and so we would've been closed Thursday. So, I, I mean, you know, the, the reality is, you know, the storms were the storms.
You can't, you can't, no.
To that, but, but there was no way to make up the extra time. That's, I guess that's what the point here is, so.
Well, I, I had one other comment. I think, you know, I was, I did not support it from the beginning. And one of the principal issues I had, or two, there were two really. One, I didn't feel there was any compelling demand on the public for our staff to be working ten hours a day. The number of people coming in at six o'clock or six-thirty at night are minimal, if any. And, and second, I think it gave the wrong signal. It, it created an impression about support or caring about support to the, to towns' folks. No matter how many folks are, are here, just the fact that the doors are locked on a Friday when people wanted to come in and do some simple thing like leave off a tax bill or something. It, it sent the wrong message, and I think we're, we're better served administratively, as you were talking about. And shows we care a little bit about the public, serving the public. So I, I fully support returning to five-day work week.
Let's go back to our motion. Motion was made and seconded to close, to open the town meeting five days, starting April first.
Can we, I think folks need some time to make, perhaps, make an adjustment in their schedule. Leave the implementation to Paul next week or two, or to get-
Okay, I, I mean, that's what we said, we'd bring it back for, for the first and decide on it there, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think people just need, well, I, I think people may have appointments scheduled or what have you, because they were used seven Fridays off, so.
But, how about we just vote to approve returning and then let the-
Starting next week.
All right.
Okay. I'll change my motion to, to starting next, next week's schedule. We'll go to five-days work week. That's, that'll be my amended motion. Is there a second to the amendment? Okay. On favor on the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? If she carried on the amendment, now we'll go back to the original, changing it to the five-day work week. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. And motion carried, thank you. Okay, that was under all business key. And the last order of business is Center School. We got a petition to rescind the Center School demolition, but it doesn't state here. It just, it just states here to see if the town will vote to rescind Article one of October twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen, Hatfield Special Town Meeting, to dismantle the Center School building and to rescind all authorization to fund this dismantling, except for the portion that pertains to the abatement of asbestos as contacted by selectmen. Furthermore, the selectmen shall be authorized to sell a portion of the property and building as described in two thousand and eight sale proposal, as on file with the town planning board, with a starting bid no lower than the cost of the asbestos removal, but taking any action relative to it, too. And this is a petition submitted on three thirty-one fifteen, at three twenty-two PM. So, there are enough signatures, but it doesn't, it just says to rescind it.
We don't, we don't, we don't change things, let it stand.
What's that?
We just put it on as is, as received.
Okay. Any further business? We'll go into, we'll go into the finance committee meeting next?
Yes.
Okay, so that concludes our portion of our town, our selectmen's meeting.